Okay, ho, ho, ho. We're gonna call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. Is Fire Captain Ted here?
Yes.
Ted, come on down. Let's go ahead and have an invocation by Fire Chaplain Ted Norton and the flag salute by Mayor Pro Tem James Stewart. Please stand. Hi Chaplain.
Hello, sir. Shall we pray? Fathers, we gather at this time of year. We gather with peace and joy. And Lord, we gather because you are a God that loves us and a God that cares and God that wants to be involved in our community. And you have placed these men and women here in this city for the purpose of giving guidance and direction. Lord, you want there to be peace. You want there to be prosperity. And as we gather here this evening to talk about what's going on in the community, Lord, you want our conversation to be thoughtful and considerate. As we share our feelings, as we share our concerns, Lord, may they be received with grace. And Lord, may comments also be given in love. We thank you, Lord, for your presence and for these men and women that you have called to this position. Give them wisdom now, Lord, as they govern this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right, please join me in pledge to this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, I'm surrounded on my left and right with the opposite of Grinch's and men and ladies who will not be getting coal in their stockings. Can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Edwards.
Merry Christmas.
Councilmember Ron.
I'm here.
Councilmember Schwank.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
And Mayor Nigar.
I am here. This is a time for public comments. Are there any public comments, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two.
Okay, do we have a video, the last one of the year?
The last one of the year, yes, we do.
Please roll it.
Hi, I'm Tracy Quartz with the Community Services Department. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with a city clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments in the consent calendar. Once a speaker is called to speak, please come forward. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Great. Madam City Clerk, can you call the first speaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Chris Kiersterski and to be followed by Jerry Hofstadter, our final speaker. So, Chris?
Great. Chris, good evening to you.
Good evening, City Council. How are you all doing tonight?
Real good. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas to all of you as well. It's a pleasure to be here and address the Council. I just wanted to introduce myself. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of you for all that you do in making the city such a wonderful place to live. My family, I have a wife and three little kids, and we enjoy everything the city has to offer. Personally, I grew up here. We moved to the valley in 95, and I graduated from Temecula Valley High School back when it was the only high school in town. So, I remember the city very well. I left and went away to college down to San Diego. And guess where I moved when I got married? That's right, I moved back to Temecula because I want to raise my family here, right? And so, we've been here for years. The reason I'm here is I just wanted to put a face to the name. I applied for the Community Services Commission, and when you see my application, I want you to know who this is that's applied. I have owned a successful business here in the valley for the last 10 years, and I'm also the Lakes and Open Space Superintendent for the City of Escondido. I manage over 4,000 acres of open space, several different parks and playgrounds, and we run a variety of different recreational programming for the community there. In addition, I supervise an elite ranger team that oversees all the downtown city parks and all the issues that come along with it, including homeless issues, drug issues, and everything in between. So, anyway, thank you again, and I look forward to hearing from you later on this year.
Chris, thanks for coming this year.
Thank you very much. God bless you all. Take care.
Thanks.
You too. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Jerry Hofstadter, our final speaker.
Jerry, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to talk to you of something pretty close to my heart. I am the son of a 23-year fire, Chicago fireman, and I'm now retired here in Temecula. And I gotta tell you, you guys are doing a great job. It's a beautiful place to retire and live. We've owned here for 18 years. I'll be retired here now, three years in January. I look around and I see what's going on in our state, and I'm really concerned about our area, our beautiful jewel, Temecula. We are densely populated and heavily foliated. We are a potential for a fire hazard. 2019 CAL FIRE reports 6,872 fires in the state of California, 250,000 acres burned, 22 injuries, three fatalities, and 732 structures. 2018 was the worst, there was over a million acres burned. The U.S. Department of Interior states that 90% of all fires are caused by humans, campfires, little bonfires, and so on. I am proposing to the city to take up an idea, and it's not gonna, I know it's not gonna happen overnight. I would propose a permanent no-live burn ordinance in the city limits of Temecula. That would, you know, you'd still be allowed to have glass, gas logs, ornamental fires and barbecues, but live wood burning fireplaces, fire pits, fireplaces, campfires. Anything we can do to help our first responders, they've got a lot of things tugging at them when it comes to, that's what starts fires, this would be one thing to help them out. I would hate to us ever become the next Paradise. Think about it, talk about it.
Thank you for coming. And if you want to continue the dialogue, we have our Fire Chief, Bill Weiser, and you're welcome to follow up with him as well.
Very good, thank you. And have a great holiday season, everybody.
You too, as well.
Thank you.
That's our last speaker, right, Madam City Clerk? Okay, we're gonna move to City Council reports. Anyone? And just by the way, we'll have some closing comments at the end of the meeting, just because I know it's Christmas and there's some sentiments. Go ahead, Mr. Schwank.
Sure, just to have a couple of things, I have a quick slide. Let's see if we can get that up really quick. Or I could animate it for you. So, we're gonna have a "Twas the Lights Before Christmas" bike ride. We've done this for three years now. This'll be the third year we've done a couple Halloween ones, the slide's not up yet, but I'm gonna go on anyways. So, like Rudolph guiding Santa's sleigh on Christmas Eve, I will be guiding the "Twas the Lights Before Christmas" bike ride through Harveston. Join us, it's this Saturday. We're meeting at Harveston Community Park. The ride starts at 7:00, and we ride through the streets of Harveston looking at all the decorations. And there's, if you've ever been over to Harveston, it's just a beautiful, wonderful community, and it's just an absolute treat to ride your bike through there. It's usually crisp, there's treats served at the beginning of the ride, now there's a slide. So, there's everything you need to know. So, this Saturday, 7:00, meet me there, meet the rest of the community there for a jolly good time. And then, sort of on, well, you'll recall a few meetings back, we dealt with some issues between the city and TVUSD. So, I'd sort of like to propose something here, and with the concurrence of my council colleagues, we could ask the city manager to work on creating, I know in our next meeting we'll be working on subcommittees. I'd like to see a TVUSD City of Temecula Subcommittee.
We have, we have one.
I don't think we have.
I think we actually have a, we may have a liaison, one member to the district, but if we want to create a two-member council Subcommittee, we can put it on the agenda in January with the others.
Sure, put it on the list.
I'd like two members of our body to meet with two members of the school board, so it's policymaker policymaker. That's what I'd like to see.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This morning, we held the Third Annual High School Girls Mentors Breakfast, and there were about 100, and I'm gonna look over at somebody and see, I think about 160 girls there this morning and some teachers, but we put together tables of eight or 10, and we put a strong female mentor at each of those tables. And so, we spend the next couple of hours visiting with the high school girls and talking to them about their future, what they want to do, maybe they don't know what they want to do. And then, we have a panel session where we answer questions, and then we answer open questions from the high school girls. And I have to tell you, this is one of my favorite things to do all year, and the other women leaders that take, you know, come and join us for breakfast really also like it a lot. So, I just want you to know that we have wonderful young ladies and young women in this city, and we really enjoy them. So, if you're watching on TV, or if you're in the audience and your daughter attended, thank you for loaning her to us for a couple of hours this morning. We get a real kick out of it, and we think that the girls do too. So, we're looking forward to the Fourth Annual for next year.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, that leaves me. A couple of things I wanted to bring up. If you came into the City Council chambers earlier today and had a chance to stay in the lobby, you may have seen an exhibit that we've recently finished. We call that the KMA Exhibit, or Kaiser, Marston, and Associate Exhibit. And it gives you a little bit of the history of Old Town, the faraway history, and then the recent history, how we took a plan called the KMA Plan, Kaiser, Marston Plan, and started implementing it, and the evolution of our implementation. So, there's a lot of good history there, there's good interactive TVs and a good display, and it's very comprehensive. It'll be there, I think, in perpetuity. Is that a fair statement, Mr. City Manager?
It can be, but we also built in flexibility. If over time we need to change it out, we can.
Sounds good. And so, I want everybody to look at that. It's fascinating, there's a lot to see. So, you don't all have to look at it tonight, but anytime you come to City Hall. I wanted to thank some people because of it. From Temecula Community Services District, Tracy Frick, Katrina Thorensen, and Kevin Hawkins, Hawk, thank you. From Community Development, Luke Watson, and Paul Mara from KMA. From IT, Damian Patrick, Chris Dreher, Jonathan Hall, Michael Heslin. Say thanks to the team, Mike. Public Works, John Maisy, Mario Munoz, Patrick Thomas. Pat, send our thanks. City Manager, Aaron Adams, Greg Butler, Courtney Fletcher, pass it on, Aaron. And many of you don't know Shauna Zernowski personally, but she takes all of the city photos, and the photos that she takes at all of our events are public, are available to the public, correct, Mr. City Manager? So, they're fantastic photos. She does a great job. So, thank you. Recently, I think it was, was it just last Sunday, the city celebrated its 30th anniversary. And we just had a fantastic celebration. We had the great performers, Cody Lee and the Midnight Satellites were here to celebrate. We had hot dogs and hamburgers and just a good time. A lot of old timers came out and a lot of new residents, and it was just a real good time. At that, at that celebration, we played a history video of the City of Temecula. And I think now, this being the final meeting of the year, it's a good time to show it and also send it out to our folks who are watching at home. So, can we roll that video? It's a little long, so just kick back.
What we wanted, what we felt we wanted as the First City Council, what we wanted Temecula to be, has continued. Each successive City Council has kept in mind what we had in mind, and which is enormously pleasing to me.
And then, my wife and I moved here to Temecula. This was a place I never wanted to leave, and I still feel that way.
Well, I think we realized that 97,000 acres surrounded by the Cleveland National Forest and Mount Palomar and all of that was really a beautiful place. From Mount Palomar to hiking and the pine trees, which is minutes away. And with the flourishing of wine country and all the things that I think that 100 years from now, it's going to become very famous. It's famous really now. It happened because Kaiser did a 97,000-acre master plan community. They laid out agriculture, wine country, horses, all the different recreational areas. So, the blueprint is there, and it's filling itself out now. It's stunning, really, to watch the growth of all these different activities, from employment to education.
I guess 1970, first vintage where we harvested grapes was 1972, and it was only 1975 then when the winery started on a very small scale. We were always, we did, it was his vision that the business would largely be run on a tourism basis, which I had mentioned was not the standard with California wineries. And so, we did 1978, I was working here at that time. We had a single-wide mobile home that we were serving wine to the occasional visitor who showed up. There was no wine country, really. And Callaway Winery, the other winery, also had a single-wide mobile home tasting room. And so, my dad had determined that he wanted to build a tasting room. So, we had the first permanent non-mobile home tasting room in Temecula, which opened in 1978. And that year also, the Solerzo Winery opened, I remember because I sold grapes to them that year. And that's probably the very early beginnings.
So, we were in last place behind, you know, I think Paul Hampton was out front and Tommy Hotchkiss with the sharecropper. And then, I remember being behind the Pattens. The dust was so thick, we finally just said, Dad, I said, gotta go out that way. So, he took out a cross-country. We went off this embankment down, and so, we passed a couple tractors. So, now, it was just Paul Hampton and the sharecropper. So, we went down through the riverbed, and we're gaining on them. I mean, the sod buster is coming to life. And here we come, around the bend. Paul Hampton's up on the bank having trouble shifting and getting it in gear. Tommy Hotchkiss and Warner over here, their floorboard is on fire, but they're still going. And we snaked through there and came around the corner, made a little 90-degree turn right onto Main Street, and the streets were lined with people. So, there was probably 300, 400 people there. And for Temecula at that time, that was a lot. And we got the checkered flag.
Coming to this community has been absolutely fantastic. Allowed so many opportunities. I remember a friend of mine asking me, hey, you wanna help at the Bloom and Wine Festival? We need someone to collect money. And I said, ah, I guess so. And he go, ah, I said, what does that mean? He said, well, it means we have to be there at 2:00 in the morning. And back then, the Bloom and Wine Festival was on Cherry Street, back in the back, off of now Diaz Road, back in the back, in the hills back there. And we would go, and we would sit there, and we'd collect cars, start coming in at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning because they wanted to be there for the Bloom Ascension. And it was neat to know that, that's how I started with the Bloom and Wine Festival. Who would have thought that a couple of years later, I'd be the entertainment chairman for five years and brought in groups like Jan and Dean, the Beach Boys, Chuck Berry, just you name it, Lou Rawls. We had a blast. And you know what, it was some great times, and the Bloom Wine Festival still exists to this day.
I believe it was November 7, 1989, we were on the ballot for incorporation of the City of Temecula. We were also on the ballot, I believe, to take over the Temecula Community Services District, which funded the recreational elements of the city. And the voters passed, I think by 87%, the vote to incorporate. We also passed another thing that was really of controversy at that time, was the name of the city, because this has always been Old Town Temecula, and people liked the name of Temecula. But the master developer, Bedford Properties, had brought forth this name of Rancho California. And then, they wanted to call it Rancho Temecula. Well, there was probably 50 other ranchos in the state of California at that time, so we didn't want to be just another Rancho Temecula in the state of California, so we decided to just leave the name Temecula. Nobody knows the name Temecula, but we left the name Temecula on the ballot. People voted for 80-some-odd percent of that, and they chose the name Temecula, chosen by the people of the city at that time. And it was great. It was fantastic.
We used to say, and to a degree, we still do, Temecula was a snapshot in time that will probably never be duplicated. It was a little tiny miracle in this little bastion of southwest Riverside County where a certain group of people were called together, got together, and found a way to mesh and knit together in a way that was unselfish, and in a way that was innovative, and in a way that everybody's talents shined. And I don't just mean from council members. I think we have close to 600 nonprofits in this area. I think it's more than that. And everybody played their part in a way that I wish we could tell everybody's story. I can tell you, it's another part of the stitch in the fabric for all of us. And there's, the city is replete with those stories. We couldn't, we couldn't cover them all, but so many people, hundreds of people gave.
Reagan talked about, in one of his speeches, he, as the President of the United States, he talked about Temecula and the fact that the entire community came together to build that sports park. And he talked about the rest of the nation coming together to do things like that.
I hope my legacy is that I was one of lots and lots of people who were excited about building a community and stepped forward at the very right time with the very right people and the very right opportunity to do some really good things. And although I have now moved from Temecula, this is home. And so, when I drive here, I say I'm coming home.
June 2, 1992, I was working in the radio station in the morning doing our show. I got a phone call that the, there'd been a traffic accident by Temecula Valley High School. It was still a small enough town that when there was a traffic accident, people called the radio station. Long story short, the Border Patrol was pursuing a Chevy Suburban full of undocumented migrants. They end up speeding through the school zone just as Temecula Valley High was starting classes at the beginning of the day, and the Suburban crashed into an Acura driven by John Davis and cut the Acura in half. Three people in that car were killed, two students walking on their way to class were killed, and one of the undocumented migrants was killed. So, that was obviously a very traumatic day, a very, very big challenge for the community.
And so, the debris clogged up in the Old Town area, and it dammed, and as a result, the Miura Creek crested and flooded Old Town, and we were assembled back then. Here, I'd been on the job for just a few weeks, and we were assembled with, you know, a lot of FEMA and public safety agencies and trying to figure out, okay, what do we do in a national disaster like this? But we came together as a city, we responded quickly, and we ultimately got some federal funds to unearth Old Town with all the mud and debris. But that was an eye-opener for us, that we needed to be very proactive as a city to make sure that our conveyance systems were free from growth and were free to flow in the year of a 100-year flood. And that wasn't even a 100-year flood, so it caused significant devastation in the Old Town area that we're trying to begin to revive because it was in very bad shape, and it was not the jewel that you see here today. So, I've been here a long time, and I've seen an awful lot of changes. The vast majority of those are positive, and the things that weren't positive, we dealt with in a positive manner to make things better. So, I just want to say to all my friends, everyone I've worked with over the years, maybe most importantly, the citizens and the voters of Temecula who have allowed me this privilege, and it has indeed been a privilege. And I wish those who come after me the very, very best, and let them know that if they screw up, I'm still living here, and they're gonna hear about it.
And it required a 2/3 majority. Everybody said that we couldn't get a 2/3 majority. And three weeks before the election, Pat Bertschall, who I just love to death, Pat Bertschall said, I believe in the citizens of Temecula. And not only do I believe that Measure C will pass, I believe it'll pass by a 3/4 majority, 3/4. And I always say she was wrong, it passed by 77%. So, it was an amazing accomplishment for the city at that time. That was in 1997, 21 years later, it's generated close to $80 million in public services specifically for community services, parks, and recreation. And so, that's something that I'm very proud of. That was a huge challenge.
If I were to say, do I have a legacy? I think my legacy is that I have worked and been a part of creating a community that families love to live in, seniors love to live in, that there is a quality of life that's unmatched anywhere else, I think, in the county.
Temecula has a good history, and Temecula has a very unique way of coming together. When I was working for San Diego State University, I had represented the campus at the Ecological Reserve that's just up the hill here. And there was a proposed gravel mine just adjacent to the university's property and right above the hill from the city. And that brought together an amazing coalition of individuals and organizations from around the region, recognizing that it was just the wrong thing in the wrong place. You know, nobody was opposed to mining or, you know, materials extraction. It was just the location, and it sat in one of the most sensitive places in Southern California, above one of the last fully protected free-flowing rivers in California, in an extremely sacred site for Pechanga, an area that has unique endemic and rare species that occur there and pretty much nowhere else in the world, in the last inland to coastal wildlife corridor in Southern California. And, you know, for all of those reasons, it was kind of like putting a rock concert next to a monastery. And this coalition formed, and I never, I'll never forget seeing the first planning commission hearing that was located here. The county actually moved the planning commission hearing here into the City of Temecula, and I want to say over 3,000 people showed up. And it was at that moment I realized, you know, Temecula was such a unique community, and it was still the largest attended hearing in Riverside's history. And to see all of that, to see that community, I just fell in love with Temecula because, you know, they know how to get things done.
It's plain to see why people want to come here. I mean, that's why we have such a huge tourism industry, is because it's beautiful. The wine country, the Old Town District, we just have a lot of very nice amenities that a lot of cities just don't have. And we still have a small-town feel. I mean, especially if you come down here on a Friday or Saturday night, and you're walking the streets, listening to the bands, you almost always run into somebody that you know. know. So that's what's really kind of cool, especially if you've been here any period of time at all. So that's what I love about Temecula.
The other thing that's really unique to this community in Temecula is volunteerism. I'd never really experienced anything like it until I came here. We had more volunteers than we had employees when we opened because there was such a love for the hospital and everybody wanted to be a part of it. We have almost 300 volunteers now at the hospital, all age ranges. And they are there, you know, day and night, chaplains, therapy dogs, people that want to, you know, be musicians. I mean, all walks of life are volunteering. And the other volunteer groups in the, in the community as well get active in the hospital. So we have, you know, the Girl Scouts will make blankets for the patients. We'll have the Assistance League donate teddy bears for children in the emergency room. And other groups donating hearts that are pillows for people after open-heart surgery can hug. So there's always other volunteers that are, again, supporting the hospital. It's wonderful in this community.
Yeah, I'd say one of the biggest challenges that I was directly involved in or saw was several years ago, you know, really analyzing the fiscal health of the city of Temecula as we do five-year projections. And we really came to the conclusion that the cost of providing a high level of public safety services was exceeding our projected revenue. And that was troubling. That truly weighed heavily on me. And what we were going to do about that, you know, whether it was going to be sacrificing services or sacrificing public safety services to meet budget goals, really, really was troubling. And I give a ton of credit to the Temecula City Council for having the backbone to put a measure on and let the voters decide. And that, that measure, of course, was Measure S, which was approved by the voters in November of 16. But that was a defining moment, in my humble opinion, was one of the biggest, if not the biggest, defining moment to shape the city of Temecula in its 30-year history.
I think if anybody wants to talk about a legacy, it's how happy and content our residents are. And as, you know, my pin says, how proud they are of the city that they live in. And really, it is a team effort. Our residents are so helpful in telling us what they want because we're all out there in the community and we're accessible because we're just neighbors. We're just neighbors who have the opportunity to serve. And I guess that's the legacy is just looking back over the city as a whole and seeing how proud everyone is to live here. And that really makes me proud.
To reference Perry Peters' famous visioning letter entrusting the city to future generations, written the day after Temecula's first mayor and city council were sworn into office.
You are the caretakers of the soul of Temecula. May you enjoy the civic inheritance we pass on to you like a baton in a relay race. We choose to think it is a positive sign that our city was born between Thanksgiving and the miracle of Christmas. As you get ready to receive the baton, let civic pride, not greed, motivate you to move forward. From silent, unseen bleachers, we cheer you on. God be with you.
We shall continue to move forward, revering our historic cultural roots, preserving our high quality of life, and creating a healthy and prosperous community the only way we know how, the Temecula way. Cheers to the city of Temecula on the first 30 years of old traditions and new opportunities. Here's to the next 30.
I'll tell you what, that probably just gave you a fingernail of Temecula history. We probably could have made an hour and a half movie if we wanted to. There was so much that was left out. A special thanks to Temecula Community Service District Mike Maury. Mike, thanks. Jeff Lawrence, Bea Barnett, Tracy Frick, and Michelle Elrod, who helped put this together. Kevin "The Hawk" Hawkins, thank you, Kevin. And from IT, Damian Patrick and Jonathan Hall. Jonathan, thank you, young man back there. Good job. And happy birthday to Temecula. All right. Seeing how that was the last report, we're going to move on over to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. One, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve action minutes of November 12th, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands. Four, update city's complimentary ticket policy to include new Fair Political Practices Commission requirements. Five, approve agreement with Townsend Public Affairs for state legislative consultant and grant writing services. This is at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Protem Stewart and Councilmember Ma Ron. Six, authorize city manager to enter into subordination agreement subordinating city as housing successor to former Temecula Redevelopment Agency deed of trust on Front Street Plaza Affordable Housing Development located at 28693 Old Town Front Street. Seven, authorize city manager to approve purchase order with California Electrical Supply for wireless lighting control system software. Eight, approve specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for Americans with Disability Act, ADA, improvements at Ronald Reagan Sports Park as part of the ADA Transition Plan Implementation Public Works Project 18-16. Nine, approve cooperative agreement with Temecula Sunrise Rotary Club in support of community Christmas dinner. Ten, approve cooperative agreement, state shop, SHOP, minor funds contribution with the state of California Department of Transportation, also known as Caltrans. Eleven, approve subdivision track maps for Summers Bend, previously known as Royal Pal Ranch Phase Two, and authorize the city manager to execute related agreements. Twelve, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for Overland Drive Extension. That's Public Works Project 16-06. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move approval.
That was a motion by Councilmember Edwards, a second by Councilmember Schwank. Please cast your vote. And that passes 5-0. At this time, I'm going to reassess the Temecula City Council meeting in favor of the Temecula Community Services District meeting and President James Stewart.
All right, I'll call to order the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Madam Secretary, please note we're all here. Are there any public comments?
Yes.
Okay. So we're on to the consent calendar. Item number 13, approve the action minutes of November 12th, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All right, that passes 5-0. Director's report.
Mr. President, I know Commissioner Willis has more to share a little later, but I just had a simple thank you to everyone up here, from the council to commission to all the department heads. Just a thank you from TCSD for helping us make another year of memories and putting on activities, services, and programs and events. We couldn't have done it without all of you and your respective team members. So from us to you, thank you. Continue blessings, happy holidays.
All right, general manners report.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
All right. Do we have any director's reports? Nope. All right, then I will adjourn this meeting until January 14th. Hold on.
You know, it just bears mentioning, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but wonderful Christmas parade.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it rained hard two hours before. But TCSD said, it's go, rain or shine. And it went and it was a fantastic event.
It was good.
Yeah. So thank you. Tell the crew. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, so we are adjourned.
All right, at this time, I'm going to convene a joint meeting of the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency and the city council. Madam City Clerk, the record should reflect that all agency members and council members are here. Do we have any public comments? Okay, let's see here. We have our consent calendar. Let's see real quick. Do we only have one item on consent? Yes, we do. Item 14, and I believe we're going to pull that item. Who's going to give the staff report for item 14?
I will, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Please continue.
Yes, before you deny, it's an extension to the disposition and development agreement between the city of successor, the city as successor to Temecula Redevelopment Agency and the Town Square Marketplace Old Town LLC. The original staff recommendation was to extend the DDA to March 13th, 2019. The city council provided direction tonight in closed session to extend the DDA to January 31st to allow staff to continue to negotiate specific deal points. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? No questions. Are there any requests to speak, Madam City Clerk? So there's no request to speak. Is there any discussion? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
That was a move by Dr. Matt Ron, a second by Mayor Protem Stewart. Please cast your vote. And that passes 5-0. Let's see here. Do we have an executive director's report?
Nothing tonight.
How about any board of directors?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, then I'm going to adjourn this joint meeting of SARDA and Temecula City Council till the next regular scheduled meeting, January 14th, 2020. All right. Now I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. It's a public hearing portion of our meeting. Item 15, approve fee reimbursement agreement with Oremar of Temecula LX LLC, Temecula Valley Lexus, in accordance with the automobile dealership fee reimbursement program. Can we have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name's Christine Damco and I'm the Economic Development Manager here. And pleased to present the fee reimbursement agreement for Oremar of Temecula, otherwise known as Temecula Valley Lexus. So just some background information here. In May of 2008, the Temecula City Council approved economic development incentives. One of those was an auto dealer incentive or an auto dealership fee reimbursement policy. The auto sector is a key sector in our business community and not only provides tax revenue to help pay for public safety and public infrastructure, they're also provide sustainable wage jobs, so good-paying jobs at our local, and they're also great community contributors. The policy permits qualified new auto dealers to receive a one-time reimbursement of development fees up to $250,000. The reimbursement will be offset by verified sales tax revenue generated by the new dealership. In September of 2019, Oremar of Temecula submitted a formal development plan application for the construction of a brand-new, almost 55,000-square-foot dealership, Temecula Valley Lexus. The project does meet the requirements listed in the auto dealership fee reimbursement policy. And I just wanted to note that this is a performance-based policy. So we are not recommending just estimated, with our estimated sales tax revenue. We want to verify their sales tax revenue and make sure that they're making what they're say they're making. The max amount reimbursed may not exceed 75% of the verified new sales tax revenue generated, which is a max of $250,000. So let's talk about the community economic benefits. The Temecula Valley Lexus is estimated to create 55 full-time positions at their dealership. The tax revenue, so this includes their sales tax, Measure S, and property tax, is estimated at over $730,000 per year. So the city would recoup their incentive investment just in the first year that the dealership is opened. And then finally, the construction of the state-of-the-art dealership creates new commerce and business opportunity for the city. With that, staff recommends that the city council approve the fee reimbursement agreement with Oremar of Temecula, aka Temecula Valley Lexus, in accordance with the automobile dealership fee reimbursement program. This concludes my presentation. And we also have representatives of Oremar here if you have any questions for them.
Thank you very much, Christine. Are there any questions for staff? I don't think so. So this is a public hearing. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak? We do not. So at this time, I am going to close the public hearing and go to comments or a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Edwards, second by Mayor Protem Stewart. Please cast your votes. And that passes 5-0. Congratulations. Lexus, we look forward to getting you open. Let's see, we, okay, that was our public hearing calendar. Let's move on to council business. Item 16, adopt an ordinance amending Section 8.28.210 of the municipal code regarding storm water discharges. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. And I'll keep this very brief. So the ordinance before you is regarding the city's NPDES or Stormwater section of the municipal code. In the municipal code, we have a list of prohibited discharges or things that are prohibited from being discharged into the storm drain system. And one of those items is irrigation runoff caused by irrigation or over-irrigation. And due to an audit that the Regional Water Quality Control Board performed on our code, they also identified that we have another section of the code that has a list of exemptions from the prohibited discharges. And one of those exemptions is potable water or water from potable sources. And it was identified that the irrigation runoff could be considered a potable water source, thereby causing a conflict between these two sections of the code. So to address that conflict, we're recommending that we remove the exemption for the discharge of potable water into our storm drain system and making it clear that irrigation runoff is a prohibited discharge. And that concludes the staff report. Can I be answering any questions?
Are there any questions? I don't see any questions. Mr. Rod? Oh, okay. You looked ready to go.
Don't put your finger up in the air.
Seeing no questions, are there any requests to speak? Seeing there's no request to speak, we'll go to discussion or a motion.
Move approval.
That was Mayor Protem, excuse me, that was Councilmember Edwards, okay? Getting ahead of myself here. That was Councilmember Edwards with a motion and seconded by Dr. Ron. Please cast your vote.
And I'll need to read it real quick.
Yes, thank you.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula amending Section 8.28.210 of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding storm water discharges.
And, da-da-da-da, that passes 5-0, which was expected. Okay, item 17, conduct annual reorganization for calendar year 2020. Madam City Clerk, I think this is you.
Mr. Mayor, it is me, and my staff report is very brief. I respectfully request that you conduct the... you conduct the annual rotational election, or general election for the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, president and vice president. Those positions will serve until December thirty first of twenty twenty, beginning January first, twenty twenty.
Thank you. I'm going to start this discussion and say that, you know, most people, we see some young people here, I'll tell you, most people do not realize that this is not what we do for, as a full-time job. I'm not the mayor all the time, and my colleagues are not council members on the time, all the time. It is primarily a volunteer position that we end up paying to do. And really, the amount of time that's spent. So this year as mayor was a very busy time for me, but I have to tell you, I could not have had a better Mayor Pro Tem than, than James Stewart. And I think following tradition, but also following worthiness, because it's not automatic that somebody gets to be mayor. But in this case, I just think you've had a fantastic year and a fantastic three years, and it's my honor to make a motion that you be the mayor for twenty twenty.
Move approval.
We need a second.
Second.
That's a second. Motion by me, second by Mary Ann Edwards. Please go ahead and cast your vote.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can respectfully ask for just a single motion with all four, that would be great.
I can do that. I didn't want to take them separately, but we can do that and then have one motion. Okay, so just sort of make, I don't think we're going to be in disagreement here. The second thing is you could never go wrong with former mayor and council member Mary Ann Edwards, okay? Just, that sums it up. You can't go wrong with her. She knows her game. So that would be my selection or my motion for vice mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll, we'll take a vote. So we got that covered. Would you like to do the honors for Temecula Community Service District?
Yes, so I am the president this year, but I would like to recommend Mr. Schwank over here, since he has a long history in the community service, as serving as one of the directors for, commissioners for many years, so.
I don't know. You think you can handle it?
Right?
I think I can.
So I'll make that motion.
To be what?
To be president of the community service district.
And I'll second that. And do we have any dissent? I don't think so. Okay, okay. There's somebody outside waving me down. Okay, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. No, you're more than worthy, Mr. Schwank. Okay, and I think, Mr. Stewart, you served as vice president, rather, now that you're going to be mayor, and you served as president of T C S D, I think there's no better person to serve as vice president, to give us support, and.
I would love to do that.
There you go. So that would be my motion.
Second.
Have we got a consensus? Sounds good. So on all the things that we have a consensus on, I believe we can take one vote, correct? Do you need a motion for that vote? So I move that all the discussion items be implemented.
Awesome.
Do you have a second?
Second.
That was Mary Ann Edwards. All in favor?
Aye. Or yes?
Yep, congratulations, Mayor Stewart.
I got you right.
Mr. President?
You're my wingwoman.
I'm your wingwoman.
All right.
Now you be careful.
You're, you're, you're going to be vice mayor. You're going to have trouble keeping up with this guy.
Right?
Oh, no, I didn't match him, Toad.
Right, she can. We're at the same events all the time.
Yeah.
She's late, but I'm there.
All right, let's move on. We're almost finished. Commission reports. Talk to me, Mr. Sullivan.
Just happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Watts from the planning commission?
I would like to tell you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the council, that my term as chair of the planning commission will expire at the end of this year, and we'll have a new chairman, Commissioner Linay Turley Trejo, and our vice chairman will be Ron Garial. It's been a pleasure up here for a year, and I'll miss these city council meetings every Tuesday night, but I'll be here once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Willis, community services commissioner?
I have some slides, I'm told. So as the last city council meeting of the year, Kevin was nice enough to ask if I would do this, and I'm happy to. We have, we have some fun things coming up in the city. On Wednesday, December eleventh, we'll kick off the, the bus tour of the 'Twas the Lights Before Christmas, all the houses that are decorated. We drove around yesterday and saw them and judged them, and they are fantastic. So everybody that goes on the tours will have a great, great time. This is city family night on Wednesday, but then we'll, we'll have the city be able to go, or the rest of the citizens be able to go throughout the month. Then on Friday, we have Temecula on Ice grand opening, which is going to be amazing, right outside of City Hall, where we have our ice skating rink. Then on Saturday, December fourteenth, 'Twas the Lights Before Christmas bike tour, which Councilmember Schwank already talked about. So everybody come and join Zach on the bike. That'll be a blast. And Winter Solstice is coming up on Saturday, December twenty first, from six to eight at Sam Hicks Park. Please come join us for that. And finally, to end the month, a very busy month, New Year's Eve grape drop, as always, right here at the Civic Center, six P M. to twelve thirty A M. to celebrate, I can't believe I'm saying this, two thousand and twenty. That concludes my report, and thank you for a wonderful year. It's been a great time, as always.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards has a question.
Yes, Eric, is the, do we have a map upon the website of the delighted homes?
If it's not up already, it will be up very shortly.
Okay.
Very shortly.
Put the slide back up, if you would, Jonathan. So we're doing a, we're doing a grape drop at nine P M. and at midnight, correct?
That's correct.
So the nine P M. is New York timeline. That's for kids, families don't want to stay up till you got it. Yeah.
All of us kids.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so that's good. Go back to the slide before this. 'Twas the Light, Lights Before Christmas bus tour.
Bike?
Bike tour. No, no, no.
Oh, this one appeared? Oh, sorry.
Yeah. I just want to remind everybody, I'm still mayor for twenty-one days, and I'll be on that tour tomorrow, and if you're there, I would certainly love to see you guys. My family will be on that, and we're just going to have a real good time.
And bribes of food are welcome.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. Anybody else going on that here?
I'll be there.
Oh, sweet.
Everybody in their jammies, right? Everybody in their jammies.
No. No, no, I did that once, and it went viral.
I think it was, I think it was the bunny ears that scared everybody.
Mr. Mayor, I, I understand on the grand opening, Temecula on Ice, there's a race that often happens with the city council members.
And, and who was it? Was it Aaron Adams?
Me.
He was like a grudgment. Were you involved?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, but you're like, you know, what's that famous ice skater, went to the Olympics, Dorothy Hamel?
Dorothy Hamel, yes.
You know, you Dorothy Hamel it out there, okay? I put my money on Dr. Ron.
He wins every.
No, no, in fact, I, I, I lost the last two years, and, and in fact, what was it last year? I.
He crashed into the.
I, I, I might have, because you're on ice, and you're trying to scoot yourself along on those little bobbies, and I might have put sandpaper on the bottom of my shoes.
And he did. He did put sandpaper.
And it still didn't help. So, you know, I've got to come up with a new gimmick this year.
Just let me clarify. There's these little scooter things for the little kids, and just imagine this man on a, oh, a twenty-inch tall thing that looks like a sea lion, and we're being pushed by professional ice skaters, and we start at one end of the rink, and they go as fast as they can go, and they have to turn us around before we crash into the wall, and then come all the way back. Now, you would think, as the smallest person being hauled on one of these sea lions, that I would be the easiest to turn. He beats me every year. Who's the, who's pushing your scooter?
Well, I recruit heavily before the event.
See?
Never mind.
Cheating on the scooter races.
I could say here. Never mind. Okay.
Yeah, just keep going.
Yes. You set it up so well. It's hard to resist. All right, public safety report. Chief Weiser, bail us out here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. I don't know if I can follow that, though. I don't have a story that way. So our first slide shows the total amount of calls that our fire department responded to in the month of November, at seven hundred and fifty-three. A little uptick in our traffic collisions because of the weather that we had. Next turn. This is a comparison of year-to-date, and you can see here in the city, we've had a little downturn in the amount of total responses that the fire department has responded to, and then the map, of course, shows red dots of fire responses and blue of medical aid. Next slide, please. Medical aid program, going out and working with CERT and our other wonderful programs we have. This year, we've had ninety-three in November, people that have completed CERT with one of our teen classes happening. So our year-to-total is seven hundred and sixty-seven so far. Next slide. Then, of course, our fire prevention, or our fire marshal's office, working hard to do plan reviews and inspections. In the month of November is a pretty normal month, but they worked, getting their annual inspections went up at the four hundred and sixty-three number. That's one of the highest we've had this year. Our public affairs, this is where our firefighters are able to actually meet the citizens often, and really spread the message of public education, especially this time when we talk about Christmas tree safety and all the things that go with that. You can see our school events, along with our station tours and expos. We had a nice month of being able to meet the public and spread that message. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you very much, chief. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you to all the executive staff and the city staff and the city council. Two thousand and nineteen was another amazing year with, with a lot accomplished, a lot of amazing programs, services, events, and couldn't be more proud. Looking forward to, to two thousand and twenty. For the students and those that stuck around, just wanted to remind everyone, we do have some coffee and refreshments out in the lobby, and our city clerk will be serving coffee out there.
Thank you, Randy.
She wanted me to offer that as well.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney General?
We had a closed session tonight. We have no reportable actions from closed session.
Thank you. I want to refer back to my city council colleagues. This is a, the last meeting of the year. If you have any closing comments for the year, now's the time to make them. Let's go with next year's vice mayor, Mary Ann Edwards.
You know, if you watch the council meetings regularly, or you come to the council meetings, you, you probably realize pretty quickly that we all like each other, and it's a rare thing to have a city that's as progressive and successful as Temecula, and council members who have served long terms, and we get along so well. Now, not to say that we don't have some heated arguments, correct? Yes, we do, but we come out of those discussions with respect for each other, and we really do like each other and have a good time. And I think that, that really does help us become more effective for the city of Temecula, and it's just par for the course in Temecula. Everybody loves it here, and, you know, we love our neighbors and we love our city. So I just want to thank you all for coming, and thank you for supporting us throughout the year as we hope to make our city the best it can be.
Dr. Ron, thank you, Mary Ann. Dr. Ron?
Yeah, this was a fun year, you know, just another one for the record books, great accomplishments. Mike, you did a great job as mayor this year. Thank you so much for that. Stu, I'm looking forward to seeing you as mayor next year. It's going to be an exciting year for you, I think. And Mary Ann, as vice mayor, I mean, we know what we get, you know? Yeah, it's going to be a fun year.
This is all there is.
And, and Zach, this was, this was a great year for you, too, I think. We've all, you know, figured each other out. It's nice to have, you know, an opportunity when you do have a transition in the council, that, that it was relatively seamless for this city, and we're able to continue the good work and accomplishment that we've, we've had. So I look forward to working with you all again in the, in the new year.
Thank you, Dr. Ron. Councilmember Schwank?
Yeah, just really quickly, I just would like to say thank you, and thank you to my council colleagues for this first year. You know, you sort of think you know, you have no idea, sort of thing, when you come into this. But, you know, I couldn't do this without your support. We do truly work as a team, and then from a city staff standpoint, like, I couldn't do it without the help of the city manager's office, and the balance of staff here. I mean, you all give your hearts and souls to this city, and it truly shows, and that, it shows in what we do, and, and it shows in our residents and our commissioners and, and what you do. So just a good hearty thank you. I mean, I'm really excited for this next year, two thousand and twenty. It'll be a great year.
Zach, you took that seat like you were born there. I mean, you just slid right in and just done a great job.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, next year's mayor, James Stewart.
All right. Well, I got a couple of things. I don't know if you guys know, but we have what's called the hot team here in town, and, you know, with the holidays coming up, we, we always have this sense that we were doing so well, and we feel bad for the, you know, the homeless out there. But I want you guys to realize that our homeless outreach team spent four hundred thirty-minute consultations with these homeless people. So they're not out there basically trying to roughhouse them, or, you know, move them along. They spend time with these people and find out, you know, their history, where they're from, you know, where their family's at. And we've had a hundred and seventeen street exits this year. So from January one to right now, a hundred and seventeen people either got into rehab, reunited with family, or were housed. So they're doing an amazing job over there, and I just wanted to highlight that, especially during the holiday season here, because it, you know, we, we do really think we're doing a great job trying to get these people the help that they need, and we'll, we'll go to a lot of extents to try to get them reunited and, and off the streets. And I also wanted to say, Temecula still really is a small town, when the local barber can become mayor.
Yes, it is.
So here we are in Mayberry, and so thank you all for putting your trust in me, and I hope to do a really good job for you. So, thank you.
It is a hoot.
Yeah.
You know, it really is. It really is. And, yeah, you know, I remember when you used to cut my hair.
I remember when you had it.
Back in the day.
I remember when you had hair.
Seriously, and of course, you did the haircut of my, first haircut for my son, and, you know, who would have known we'd be here? Couldn't, couldn't predict the future. I got a, a few things in conclusion to say. This was a year I loved Temecula, and I'm hopeful, I think so, but I'm hopeful that that message got communicated just throughout the town. I think it was a year of people loving Temecula.
I'm sorry.
And a lot of Temecula love, and so everybody who carried that message, I really appreciate it. I want to say a couple of thank yous to our police and firefighters. You need to convey that chief-in-chief out to the gang. I think it was, you know, FBI stats again have us at number fifteen, you know, safest cities among the nation. I had somebody, seriously, somebody called me and was really concerned that we dropped to fifteenth, you know, from number, I'm, I'm really serious. I got the email, and I didn't know how to respond. I wanted to be snarky, but I just said, hey, we'll work on it. But you guys really, really lead the way in public safety, and I just want to thank you for an outstanding year. With our staff, second to none, and you guys, for me as mayor, and for the city council, of all the things we did this year, man, they all just came off in every way, from support from Public Works, from all the events, from T C S D, all the issues city manager's office handled. Mike, the computers rant, okay? You know, no complaints, you know, no complaints is, is, is just great. You know, Jonathan, you're out there at every event, you and your team, you know, with the setup so professionally done. I think I can go on and on. You know, Jennifer's not here right now, but you know what? We, you know, our books are audited. They always come out stellar. Our bills are paid, and, you know, nobody's complaining. It's one of those things. And of course, Luke, busy year for you guys as well, delivering the goods. I can go on and on. I just need you all to communicate that to your staff, that the mayor and city council said that publicly and said, thank you. A couple of last things. Zach, you know, I think you, you were very modest. I've never seen somebody spend their first year in the manner in which you did. You took a lot of time to learn, and you also jumped in with two feet, and it just was an amazing, productive year for you, and I'm very proud of the work that you've accomplished. You, you really got involved and rolled up your sleeves. You, you really got involved and rolled up your sleeves. At the same time, remain very teachable. Mary Ann, you're always easy, or rather, always there again as an anchor, you know? You've been here long enough. Dr. Ron, your analysis, your spirited debate and the environmental perspective you bring is just so valuable to the city and I just wanted to thank you because you certainly lent it this year as well. And Mr. Stewart, I think you really came into your own this year. You've done some amazing things that have to do with gun violence. It has to do with vocational, you know, workforce. And there's a number of other things, I, you know, your Rotary Club service, all of these things. I can go down the list, but I think you're, again, you're gonna have a great, great year as mayor and I'm, I'm gonna be proud to serve under you as mayor. So, last meeting of the year, my love to you all. And thank you very, very much.
Love you, everybody.
I really, really do appreciate it. If there's nothing more, this meeting is for the rest of the year. Adjourned.